Mary Belvair?
She's absent, excused.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Barbara Pulitzky?
Here.
Ron VanKirk?
Here.
Meg Ryanchaki?
Here.
Andy Selhertz?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Would you please stay and join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with the thirty and seven stars of God. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being part of our meeting this evening. We do have some approval of minutes for the meeting due to February 12, 2018. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding those minutes?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Page three, under my remarks, the second line from the bottom, instead of some members, it should read some residents. And then, I'm sorry, going back to page two, fifth line up from the bottom, instead of Tiedemann Road, it should be Rodone Road Project. And I think that's it. I'll make a motion to approve this amendment.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barbara Pulitzky?
Yes.
Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryanchaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Well, this evening, at the beginning of the council meeting, the council is going to go into executive session to interview the mayor's appointment for the chief position, Chief of Fire Position Kevin Paul. So our intention is to have council go into executive session, have council ask any questions that they'd like to ask the chief, and then we'll come out and have a vote on the confirmation of Mr. Paul as the chief of the fire department. Right? Anyone have any comments or questions?
I move we adjourn into executive session for the purpose of conducting the interview with acting chief Paul.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barbara Pulitzky?
Yes.
Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryanchaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
We'll be back. Back to order. Council has the interview with Mr. Paul. Call me back to order. And I will make the motion that council confirm Kevin Paul as the fire chief.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barbara Pulitzky?
Yes.
Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryanchaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
This time, I'll turn over to the mayor.
Thank you. I am going to perform the oath of office. So Kevin? Would you please raise your right hand? I, Kevin Paul,
I, Kevin Paul,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Ohio,
the Constitution of the State of Ohio,
and the Charter and laws of the City of Brooklyn,
and the Charter and laws of the City of Brooklyn.
and I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially,
and I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially,
discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me,
discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me,
as fire chief in the City of Brooklyn, Ohio,
as fire chief in the City of Brooklyn, Ohio,
according to the best of my ability and understanding.
according to the best of my ability and understanding.
this I promise, as I shall answer to God.
this I promise, as I shall answer to God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, I'll turn it over to Kevin to make some comments, but I just wanted to say that I'm honored that he applied for fire chief. He's been doing a great job over the last couple of months as the acting fire chief, and I look forward to what he's going to be doing in the future. And I think we could, it says a lot that all the police and all the fire came out and supported him today. So Kevin?
Mayor, members of council, I appreciate swearing me in as the chief tonight. I look forward to working with all of you. My fellow directors, who I've worked with the last couple of months, it's a great team that the mayor has here, and I really appreciate your support that you guys have given me through this transition. I'd like to thank the guys from Brooklyn for all their hard work and their service. I'm very fortunate that I have such a good group of firefighters that I work with, and it makes my job very easy throughout the days. I'd also like to thank the Brooklyn Police Department for their support. I've always had a good camaraderie with those guys from my years being on SWAT. I'd like to thank the firefighters from Department of Fire Department, Chief Lasky, Captain Higabotham, Captain Lou Davis, and Captain Matt Garen. I appreciate you being here. I'd like to send out a special thanks to Scott Milkie. Oh, TJ Martin, I'm sorry. I couldn't see you behind the lid there. I apologize, TJ. I'd like to thank Scott Milkie for all his help throughout this transition as well. So, thanks to everybody. I thank you to citizens of Brooklyn for being the citizens of Brooklyn and letting us do our jobs. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, chief of law. Welcome, welcome to the city officially, even though you've been working here for a long time. Congratulations on your appointment. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending this evening as well. Appreciate that. Never felt safer. All right. Very good. Once again, congratulations, sir. We're happy to have you officially onboard. We'll move on with our council meeting at this time. On Tuesday, March 6, at 6:00 p.m., council and the school board met once again to discuss the future of Hurricane Alley and the property that was attached to it. A representative from Benkei Landscaping was present to ask and answer questions for both council and the school board, as well as the public. There was a lot of productive dialogue that went on back and forth that provided a good baseline for Benkei going forward. And the next step is they're going to be doing several proposals for the best use of the land based upon the wants and needs of both the city and also the school. And the next step will be to take that input, put that together, and offer several proposals for that. So this will be an ongoing process, and of course, we will keep the residents apprised. But it's very exciting. We had a very productive meeting last week regarding this, and so please stay tuned for some positive things to come out of that. At this time, I'm going to make the motion that we amend the agenda this evening. We received an email from the mayor a little bit later in the day that the American Red Cross has donated four infant and six child minicabs, along with several lung bags and replacements valued about $500. These are going to be used in CPR and life-threatening classes. And this correspondence is our form of acceptance required by ordinance 2016-58.
Move to amend the agenda.
Second.
To amend the agenda, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barbara Pulitzky?
Yes.
Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryanchaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
We'll now proceed with our council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is in the safe and good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, stick your hand in the dress, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I'd like to make a comment regarding the trade negotiations and the tariffs they're trying to put on. What they don't advise a lot of times is what they do bill, what they charge us to get things into other countries. For example, I export, work with exporting overseas auto parts, and one customer talking in the Netherlands, a Jeep Wrangler that's about $45,000 a year. When he gets in with all taxes and duties and surcharges, he's over $100,000 in the Netherlands. Another example is Norway. Norway, many years ago, I can't say exactly, maybe 10 years ago, put a high tariff on pickup trucks, light-duty pickup trucks, SUVs and things, like an F-350, whatever it costs, had approximately, I think it's at least $100,000 to the vehicle. And Norway does not produce its own trucks like that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'll go real quick here. My name is Bob Hennings. I live at 4643 Winter Lane. I'm on the Board of Education. I'm also the president of the Brooklyn Fight Boosters. I'm in a hurry, so I'm out of breath. I want to thank every one of you all for your help, all the way from the donations for the fireworks display, the donations for the night at the races, and the donations for the play. All of you are fantastic. I can't thank you all enough. It's really good when you have a council that gets involved and the mayor who gets involved for your school system. And the boosters completely can't thank you all enough. So thank you all. I'm out of breath. Trying to run up here. And Kevin, congratulations.
Anyone else have anything to say for the good and wealthy city of Brooklyn? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we'll begin this evening with the Public Safety and Environmental Committee. At the conclusion of tonight's council meeting, the Public Safety Committee will meet to discuss the following items. The first of which is the power outage and the accident emergency backups for our intersections. Of course, you all know what happened on Tiedemann Road. It's been a couple of weeks ago now, but we had one of our boxes wiped out on that, so we'll be discussing that. Also, animal trapping, which seems to come up periodically, we'll be discussing in the meeting following this one. And of course, the new police station and other municipal services, we're going to start that conversation once again. The police station, we've talked about this for several years, basically since I've been on council, I'm in my seventh year, I think, on council now, and we've talked about it every year. So it definitely is a need that's growing greater, so we're going to start that conversation again. And we're going to continue our conversation regarding the Department of Regional Dispatch Center, and we'll talk about that, and of course, any other topics that our directors or chiefs have. So that will be immediately following this meeting this evening. We'll now move on with our Recreation Board representative, and that is Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, March 19, in the Research Center meeting room at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tansky. Next up is our Board of Zoning Appeals Commissioner Kolsar, he's also going to talk about the community reinvestment area.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting this Thursday, March 15, here in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. They'll be hearing the following requests. These are all from Tom O'Neill, representing Menard Incorporated. This is all for a Menard's Home Improvement Store located at 770 Brook Park Road, permanent parcel 43319001. First is an eight-foot variance to the maximum accessory structure height of 20 feet. The next one is an eight-foot variance to the maximum fence height of six feet. The next one is 36 space variance to the minimum of one parking space for each 400 square feet of floor area. A 120-square-foot variance to the maximum of two square feet of signage for each one linear foot of building frontage. Nine additional sign variance to the maximum of one identification sign for each building face. A 64-foot variance to the maximum freestanding sign height of 16 feet. And, no, not the last one yet. One additional side variance to the maximum of one freestanding sign per lot. 90-square-foot variance to the 60-square-foot maximum area of a single pole sign. And then, a 340-square-foot variance to the 60-square-foot maximum sign area for a single pole sign. And that's all for the Menard's variances that are required for their new superstore. The next requests are from Andrew Clark, and this is for a one-foot variance to the maximum height of a fence in a front yard at 10407 Bed Off Road, permanent parcel 43302017. The next request at the same property for Oak Park is for a 13-foot variance to the maximum distance from the front of the building for a fence at 10407 Bed Off Road. That concludes the zoning report. Also, I have a quick report on the Community Reinvestment Housing Council. This is a group that meets once a year. The Community Reinvestment Housing Council serves to assist and encourage development through tax exemptions on the increase in value for new construction or remodeling residential, commercial, industrial buildings within the community reinvestment area. The current community reinvestment area is the entire city, and Housing Council consists of two members appointed by the mayor, two by city council, and one by the planning commission. These members then appoint two more members, and the term is three years. And that term expired last year, so the members are getting new terms right now. This meeting coming up is also going to be March 15, this Thursday, and it will be at 5:30 p.m. here in the City Hall Conference Room. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kolsar. The Planning Commission met on Thursday, March 1, at 6:00 p.m. We heard the following request, a request from Copperstone Catering for a portable electric changeable sign at 4630 Ridge Road. This request was deferred from February, and once again, no one from Copperstone appeared at the meeting, and so the request was unanimously denied. The second was a request from Mark Hayes for a freestanding sign for Hayes Equipment at 3600 Ridge Road. This was also deferred at the February meeting, and they did appear before the committee, and this request was unanimously approved. Also, there will be a special meeting of the Planning Commission held this coming Thursday, March 15, at 5:45 p.m. And there's just one item on the agenda, that's a request from Alan Adams for site approval for a temporary sales office for the Brooklyn Point Assisted Living Facility at Zero Idlewood Drive. And that means they're moving quite along on the project over there. If you've ever, if you've been behind Ridge Park Square recently, you'll see that it's completely under roof now, and so they're going to be setting up a temporary office over there. And so that will be, we will hear from them on Thursday, March 15. And then the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be held on Thursday, April 5, at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room. Of course, all are welcome to attend. I will now move on with economic development and Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. I'm looking a bit short, trying to save my voice a little bit. The Economic Development Committee met this evening at 5:45 in the conference room. We talked about ordinance 2018-34. We have voted to approve it with the mayor entering into a job retention and creation grant agreement with Hope Bridge LLC. I'll let Mr. Udris, our economic development director, go more into the details with his report. We also reviewed the purchase of land on Memphis Avenue at 7476 Memphis Avenue. That motion now for the moment's been tabled. And we also talked about ordinance 2018-33, about a piece of property, parcel number 433-11-099, for a piece of property on shady lane, value of $100. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. The Finance Committee met this evening at 6:15 in the conference room, and I will go over the items that are up for third reading this evening and also that are new to the agenda. Ordinance 2018-11, this is authorizing declarations of an official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from proceeds, bonds, notes, or other obligations or temporary advances. And as was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, this ordinance opens up the option to finance capital purchases for 2018, and this opens up the possibility that once we pay for these items, we can then go back and actually finance them if that need exists. It does not mean we will do that. It just opens up that option. It's something we've never done before. So we voted, in the committee meeting, we voted for council to adopt that. Ordinance 2018-13, this is the agreement for regarding the slope repair portion of Ridge Road, and this just begins the preliminary work on that erosion that's taking place along Ridge Road, right next to Best Buy. And we budgeted a little over $42,000 for this work for this year in our capital budget, and this ordinance begins that process with preliminary costs of $14,650 for the engineering portion. Ordinance 2018-14, this is authorizing all actions necessary to accept the NOPEC Energized Community Grant, and the City of Brooklyn is currently eligible for $39,506 for some sort of energy efficiency upgrade or project. The first step to tapping into these funds is to pass this ordinance, and then the administration is looking into exactly what the best use of these funds will be, and that is required to be, have something submitted to them as far as what we're going to spend this on by December the 1st. And so, once this passes, then we'll have December the 1st to make decisions what we want to use that for. Next is ordinance 2018-15, and this is a renewal for the service agreement with Bayless Communication for the maintenance of all of our network and software here in the city. And this is just a renewal. It's the same cost as last year, $51,641.10. Then 2018-16, this is to continue the process of vacating the portion of Montgomery Place south of Manoa. We've talked about this almost to exhaustion here, but there's a piece of land next to a house on Manoa Avenue that is technically a street, but for years, the city has not touched it, maintained it. It's basically been used as a driveway, and so the city now intends to vacate that and to sell it to the adjacent property owner who's in agreement with that. Once this passes tonight, we will then have a purchase agreement drawn up, have the plat sent to the county, so on and so forth, and that will be the final step in this very long process. But that was, and again, the Finance Committee voted to, made the motion for council to adopt this as well. Ordinance 2018-19 is up for third reading, and this is $1,420,000 in notes, and this is paying down $220,000 of debt that was issued prior to last year on a five-year rollout. We've got one more year of that $220,000 to make. And of course, last year, we financed $1.5 million for Rodone Road, and we will pay down 20% of that in 2018. So we will roll forward into this year, $1,420,000. And the goal for 2019, we'll pay off the other $220,000 again next year, plus another 20% of the Rodone Road project. So within five years, the Rodone Road project will be paid for. That is the plan at this time. Ordinance 2018-30 is up for, it's first reading, but for suspension. If you recall, last meeting, we passed a resolution in support of this Safe House to School infrastructure funding, and this ordinance is the next step in that, and Mrs. Pucci, I'm sure, will address that when she makes her report here in a moment. Ordinance 2018-31 is a contract with the Software Solutions for Maintenance Support of the VIP System here in the city. The administration has up to $15,000 that they can spend without council approval. Up to this point, this maintenance program has been under that price. It's now over, that is $20,800, and so that does need council approval, and that is on first reading this evening. 2018-32 is on first reading, but the administration has asked that we pass by suspension of rules, and this allows the administration to enter into a 36-month agreement with AT&amp;T for the PRI lines, which are just the lines that, the phone lines, allowing to carry data, voice, video, those kind of things. We currently have four of them. This agreement would reduce that to one. It would also allow us to enter into a three-year contract. As we've been having discussions with Mr. Schaefer, it's very difficult to get contracts negotiated with AT&amp;T on a yearly basis. We had a situation last year where they way overcharged us because they didn't get our new contract to the system, and the Finance Department spent a year chasing down, was it $10,000 or so, $13,000 or so that they put on our bill that we did not owe. And so, this at least allows us to have a three-year contract with them, and so we do hope to pass that by emergency this evening. 2018-33 is an agreement for a sale or purchase of land bank property on shady lane for $100. This is an item that the Economic Development Committee recommended the city purchase this property last year, and this is on first reading. Ordinance 2018-34 is authorizing the administration to enter into a job retention and creation grant with a potential new employer here in the City of Brooklyn called Hope Bridge LLC. And the grant would provide $22,500 in incentives over three years if Hope Bridge comes to the location of 7580 North Cliff Avenue. And this will bring in their counseling service for the greater Cleveland area to this location. It will create 35 new clinical analysts, administrative jobs over those three years, with an estimated payroll of $1.575 million. And they also plan on spending about $25,000 in improvements on the tenant improvements there at the facility, and that is on first reading. And then, lastly, is ordinance 2018-35, and I'm sure Mr. Schaefer will just talk about this when he gives his report here momentarily, but this is an agreement with CPP to provide various electricity to our uni buildings. As you recall, from last year, we went into an agreement to put solar panels on the landfill, on half the landfill, with an agreement with Cleveland Public Power that they will be the ones that would be buying that power from us. And there were kind of three parts of our side of that contract, and this covers all three of those. One, it varies, the power lines in a section here on Memphis Avenue. Also, it allows Brooklyn to become a customer of Cleveland Public Power for our municipal buildings here. And then, lastly, it gets lines down to the solar panels, well, the potential solar panels, so they can provide the electricity for that. And Mr. Schaefer gave us an estimated cost savings of about $64,000 on what we're currently paying with CEI over the first five years. It is a 10-year agreement. After the five years, it goes to whatever the standard rate is, right? But again, Mr. Schaefer will probably give more detail about that in a moment. And that is it for finance. And so we'll now move on with reports of council. We'll begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
Excuse me. May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the Community Reinvestment Housing Council, I know we received an email from Council President VanKirk on your recommendations, but in the past, we've always taken a vote of council to appoint those. So I would suggest that we do that.
Sure, we covered the agenda and took that vote at the end. Sure. Right. One more thing I failed to mention before I jump in. Okay, I did this in the committee meeting as well. We do have a couple of grants from the fire department, and one of them is for a tablet they're going to be using for EMS reporting, submissions to the high emergency medical services system, along with the training on how to use that equipment. There is no match, the City of Brooklyn, so the council would recommend that the city go ahead and apply for that grant. And of course, as I mentioned before, we had the donation from the American Red Cross as well. All right? Mr. Tansky?
Thank you. Just want to congratulate our new fire chief, Kevin Paul. The Brooklyn High School Drama Club performed the award-winning musical Beauty and the Beast March 8, 9, and 10. The residents, their families, and friends were treated to a spectacular show. The countless hours spent from our students, parents, teachers, administrators, music boosters, and all volunteers who dedicated their own time and talents to make this event possible. A special thank you to music director, Mr. Sean Sullivan, and producer-director, Mrs. Kimberly Cipriani, for their guidance and instruction, and for all their efforts to make this show happen. As a community, we should be very proud of the entire cast and crew members as they worked so hard every day for the past couple of months to put this show together. From the stage crew who built the amazing set, to every cast member who remembered all their lines, to the pit crew who played the music, and to all those in attendance who came to enjoy and support our wonderful and very talented students. I look forward to next year's production. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Pulitzky.
Thank you, Mr. VanKirk. Well, it looks like I'm going to be repeating a lot of what Kevin said, but it goes with repeating. I also saw Beauty and the Beast, the first half on Thursday morning, with many other senior citizens as a guest of the school, and then I went to the full performance on Saturday. What an excellent job by Mrs. Cipriani, Mr. Sullivan, the orchestra, the cast, and the crew. I've seen professional productions that didn't even match what these kids did. We have many outstanding students that need our support. With that said, please vote for the levy, even if you don't have kids, grandkids, in school. Your property values depend on a good school system. For those of us older residents, it's part of our children's inheritance, hopefully in the far distant future. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pulitzky. Next up is Mr. Selhertz. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Miss Meg Ryanchaki. I apologize.
I just want to also say congratulations to the new chief, Paul. I honestly do believe you'll do a great job, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Opens up the possibility that once we pay for these items, we can then go back and actually finance them if that need exists. It does not mean we will do that. It just opens up that option. It's something we've never done before. So we voted in the committee meeting, we voted for council to adopt that. Ordinance 2018-13, this is the agreement for regarding the slope repair portion of Ridge Road. And this just begins the preliminary work on that erosion that's taking place along Ridge Road next right next to Best Buy. And we budgeted a little over $42,000 for this work for this year in our capital budget. And this ordinance begins that process with preliminary costs of $14,650 for the engineering portion. Ordinance 2018-14, this is authorizing all actions necessary to accept the NOPEC Energized Community Grant. And the city of Brooklyn is currently eligible for $39,506 for some sort of energy efficiency upgrade or project. The first step to tapping into these funds is to pass this ordinance. And then the administration is looking into exactly what the best use of these funds will be. And that is required to be have something submitted to them as far as what we're going to spend this on by December the first. And so, once this passes, then we'll have December the first to make decisions what we want to use that for. Next is ordinance 2018-15, and this is a renewal for the service agreement with Bayless Communication for the maintenance of all of our network and software here in the city. And this is just a renewal. It's the same cost as last year, $51,641.10. Then 2018-16, this is to continue the process of vacating the portion of Montgomery Place south of Manoa. We've talked about this almost to exhaustion here. But there's a piece of land next to a house on Manoa Avenue that is technically a street. But for years, the city has not touched it, maintained it. It's basically been used as a driveway. And so the city now intends to vacate that and to sell it to the adjacent property owner who's in agreement with that. Once this passes tonight, we will then have a purchase agreement drawn up, have the plat sent to the county, so on and so forth. And that will be the final step in this very long process. But that was again, the finance committee voted to made the motion for council to adopt this as well. Ordinance 2018-19 is up for third reading. And this is $1,420,000 in notes. And this is paying down $220,000 of debt that was issued prior to last year on a five-year rollout. We've got one more year of that $220,000 to make. And of course, last year, we financed $1.5 million for Road on Road. And we will pay down 20% of that in 2018. So we will roll forward into this year, $1,420,000. And the goal for 2019, we'll pay off the other $220,000 again next year, plus another 20% of the Road on Road project. So within five years, the Road on Road project will be paid for. That is the plan at this time. Ordinance 2018-30 is up for its first reading with suspension. If you recall, last meeting, we passed a resolution in support of this Safe Routes to School infrastructure funding. And this ordinance is the next step in that. And Mrs. Pucci, I'm sure will address that when she makes her report here in a moment. Ordinance 2018-31 is a contract with the software solutions for maintenance support of the VIP system here in the city. The administration has up to $15,000 that they can spend without council approval. Up to this point, this maintenance program has been under that price. It's now over that is $20,800. And so that does need council approval. That is on first reading this evening. 2018-32 is on first reading, but the administration has asked to be passed by suspension of the rules. And this allows the administration enter into a 36-month agreement with AT&amp;T for the PRI lines, which are just the lines that the phone lines allow them to carry data, voice, video, those kind of things. We currently have four of them. This agreement would reduce that to one. It would also allow us to enter into a three-year contract. As we've been having discussions with Mr. Schaefer, it's very difficult to get contracts negotiated with AT&amp;T on a yearly basis. We had a situation last year where they way overcharged us because they didn't get our new contract to the system. And the finance department spent a year chasing down, was it $10,000 or so, $13,000 or so that they put on our bill that we did not owe. And so this at least allows us to have a three-year contract with them. And so we do hope to pass that by emergency this evening. 2018-33 is an agreement for a sale or purchase of land bank property on Shady Lane for $100. This is an item that the Economic Development Committee recommended the city purchase this property last year. And this is on first reading. Ordinance 2018-34 is authorizing the administration to enter into a job retention creation grant with a potential new employer here in the city of Brooklyn called Hope Bridge LLC. And the grant would provide $22,500 in incentives over three years if Hope Bridge comes to the location of 7580 North Cliff Avenue. And this will bring in their counseling service for the greater Cleveland area to this location. It will create 35 new clinical analysts, administrative jobs over those three years with an estimated payroll of $1.575 million. And they also plan on spending about $25,000 in improvements on the tenant improvements there at the facility. And that is on first reading. And then lastly is ordinance 2018-35. And I'm sure Mr. Schaefer will just talk about this when he gives his report here momentarily. But this is an agreement with CPP to provide various electricity to our uni buildings. As you recall from last year, we went into an agreement to put solar panels on the landfill, on half the landfill, with an agreement with Cleveland Public Power that they will be the ones that would be buying that power from us. And there were kind of three parts of our side of that contract. And this covers all three of those. One, it varies, the power lines in a section here on Memphis Avenue. Also, it allows Brooklyn to become a customer of Cleveland Public Power for our municipal buildings here. And then lastly, it gets lines down to the solar panels, well, the potential solar panels, so they can provide the electricity for that. And Mr. Schaefer gave us an estimated cost savings of about $64,000 on what we're currently paying with CEI over the first five years. It is a 10-year agreement. After the five years, it goes to whatever the standard rate is. Right? But again, Mr. Schaefer will probably give more detail about that in a moment. And that is it for finance. And so we'll now move on with reports of council. We'll begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
Excuse me, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the Community Reinvestment Housing Council, I know we received an email from Council President Van Kirk on your recommendations. But in the past, we've always taken a vote of council to appoint those. So I would suggest that we do that.
Sure, we can run the agenda and take that vote at the end. Sure. One more thing I feel to mention before I jump in, I did this in the committee meeting as well. We do have a couple of grants from the fire department. And one of them is for a tablet they're going to be using for EMS reporting, submissions to the high emergency medical services system, along with the training on how to use that equipment. There is no match the city of Brooklyn. So the council would recommend that the city go ahead and apply for that grant. And of course, as I mentioned before, we had the donation for the American Red Cross as well. Right? Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate our new fire chief, Kevin Paul. The Brooklyn High School Drama Club performed the award-winning musical Beauty and the Beast, March 8th, 9th, and 10th. The residents, their families, and friends were treated to a spectacular show. The countless hours spent from our students, parents, teachers, administrators, music boosters, and all volunteers who dedicated their own time and talents to make this event possible. A special thank you to music directors, Mr. Sean Sullivan, and producer-director and Mrs. Kimberly Cipriani for their guidance and instruction, and for all their efforts to make this show happen. As a community, we should be very proud of the entire cast and crew members as they worked so hard every day for the past couple of months to put this show together. From the stage crew who built the amazing set, to every cast member who remembered all their lines, to the pit crew who played the music, and to all those in attendance who came to enjoy and support our wonderful and very talented students. I look forward to next year's production. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Plitzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Well, it looks like I'm going to be repeating a lot of what Kevin said, but it goes with repeating. I also saw Beauty and the Beast, the first half on Thursday morning, with many other senior citizens as a guest of the school. And then I went to the full performance on Saturday. What an excellent job by Mrs. Cipriani, Mr. Sullivan, the orchestra, the cast, and the crew. I've seen professional productions that didn't even match what these kids did. We have many outstanding students that need our support. With that said, please vote for the levy, even if you don't have kids, grandkids, in school. Your property values depend on a good school system. For those of us older residents, it's part of our children's inheritance, hopefully in the far distant future. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Plitzky. Next up is Mr. Selhertz. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Ms. Bedrani Shaki. I apologize.
I just want to also say congratulations to the new chief, Paul. I honestly do believe you'll do a great job, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. And as the previous two said, my husband and I did enjoy the Beauty and the Beast on Friday. And the students, parents, and staff should be all proud of their hard work that they put into that musical. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up now is Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Congratulations to Chief Paul. I've seen you many a times, taking care of my folks and all. It's a very good choice. So glad to see it's within the ranks and also.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Andrew and Seth. They went down to state finals for wrestling this weekend. They didn't really turn out as good as they wished they would have. But even to be down there in Columbus, they're in the top 16 of each of their weight divisions. So just to get that first accomplishment. So hats off to those gentlemen. As everybody else said, yep, we were at Beauty and the Beast. Hats off to everybody involved behind the scenes. On the scenes, just a lot of good stuff. This Thursday, March 15th at 7:00 PM, the Brooklyn Library is going to be simulcasting, an event that's coming from downtown. Pulitzer Prize-winning author of Evicted Poverty and Profit in American City, his name is Matthew Desmond. He will be doing a free performance at Playhouse Square, but it's also going to be simulcast at approximately five or six other branches of the public library system throughout the county. And one other comment or question I'd like to have is after the next counseling, I'd like to have scheduled the public work session being to the public as well. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thanks, sir. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I too would like to publicly congratulate Chief Paul. I have all the confidence in the world that he's going to do a really great job. And this is good not only for him and his family, but it's also really good for our department for a multitude of reasons. So congratulations.
Sure.
Beauty and the Beast, we also attended. And, you know, one of the things that I've said over the years is it's really amazing for such a small school community that we have, the level of talent. And I'm going to try not to be redundant. So I'd just like to thank everyone who did work so hard, because this does take months of effort. But one of the nice things is when you go to the musical every single year, you see the progression of the students, whether it's those in the pit orchestra, you know, as they move up, or even the crew. I know Mr. Hennings was helpful in assisting them with the set and everything this year. But the actors, they very frequently start out in lesser roles. And it's really nice to see how they progress. And then, you know, when they're upperclassmen playing the more difficult and challenging roles. So congratulations to all who were involved. And also, a shout out to the PTA, because the PTA provided breakfast to the seniors who come and see the first act on, I think it's Thursday morning that they do that. So thank them for that. Last week, I attended the annual meeting of the Big Creek Balanced Growth Partnership, which was back in Brooklyn. We were the hosts this year. Balanced growth is a voluntary incentive-based strategy to protect and restore Lake Erie, the Ohio River, and Ohio watersheds to assure long-term economic competitiveness, ecological health, and quality of life. Basically, it balances the importance of economic development along with protecting the environment. Our partners are the other communities in the Big Creek watershed, and they are Cleveland, Parma, Parma Heights, Brook Park. Each city gave an update on projects in their city, which is always interesting. And this is always a very well-attended event. I'd like to thank Marielle Stasek, who is chair of the Big Creek Connects, and also Bob Garden, who's the executive director, for their efforts in organizing this annual event. I'll save the date. The annual Big Creek cleanup is going to be Saturday, June 2nd. This is the 20th year for the cleanup. More details will follow. I also attended the pre-audit committee last week, which also served as our first quarter audit committee meeting. This meeting is not open to the public. Basically, we sit down with the auditors. They discuss their timeline and what they're going to be looking at in the audit. Their goal this year is to have our CAFER, which is our comprehensive annual financial report, completed by the end of May. Mr. Van Kirk already touched on the Hurricane Alley project, so I won't mention that. Speaking of the library, there's a program right now, if you have any fines on your library card, every March, the library does a food for fines program. It's an opportunity to donate canned goods and/or cash to the Cleveland Food Bank through the library, and also get your fines reduced. So if you bring one of the super six, which is needed by the food bank, which is peanut butter, cereal, canned soup, canned vegetables, canned beef stew, or canned tuna fish, for every one of those that you bring, you can get a dollar off of your fines, up to $4 per visit. So it's a painless way to get some of your fines down, if you have any. And it's also collects fines, or I'm sorry, collects food for a good cause. Regarding the ordinance for Safe Routes to School, on our agenda this evening, basically, this is the final step in the application process. I already spoke at a couple other meetings that this is for infrastructure. I'd like to thank Susie Marquez, who's the behavioral interventionist at the schools, who coordinates this, and also directors, Andy Udris, Kevin Butler, for their work on this, and also Police Chief Milkie, and also Sergeant Knapp and Officer Meadows. We've been meeting since the fall, and we appreciate everyone's efforts on this. Just to touch on the school renewal levy, we do have a resolution on our agenda this evening. And this is a renewal, no new taxes. It brings in roughly $2.25 million for our schools. As Mrs. Plitzky already mentioned, good quality schools are very important to all of us, whether we have children in the schools or not. It is reflected in our property values. I think the schools have been good stewards of the public tax dollars. And it's very important that this pass. So I'd ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this resolution, which encourages all residents to support the renewal. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Again, congratulations, Chief Paul. I know you're probably tired of hearing it, but congratulations as well. We're happy to have you here. I also want to say congratulations to the students of Brooklyn High School as well. I was not able to attend the performance. My wife and I were out of town this weekend. But we've been in the performances in the past, and they always do a great job. And so congratulations to them. As Mrs. Pucci just mentioned, there is a resolution on tonight's agenda in support of the school district renewal levy. I would want to inform residents, I will be abstaining from voting on this resolution. It's been my policy since I've been on council to not vote on budgetary items that council has no say in. A school levy is such an item. School finances are the responsibility of the school board and the administration of the school. I do not believe it's council's place to weigh in on these types of issues. I would expect the same from the school board members with any proposed resolution dealing with city budgetary items over which they have no control. This has always been my stance with these types of resolutions, and remains my stance for this one. Every member of council up here, as well as all other residents, have one vote. They must decide whether to support these levies or not. I know the school administration and the school board members will be in the neighborhoods out promoting this levy. And as always, I would encourage residents to consider the levy and vote accordingly. I'm not saying that I'm against the levy. I just don't think it's city council's role to weigh in on budgetary items that we have no say in. And so that's why I wanted to explain why I'll be abstaining from that vote on this resolution this evening. And that's all I have. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I just want to thank everybody for understanding. We had to shut the city services down for a few of our buildings with power outages from the storm a couple of weeks ago. But I also want to thank their service department and our fire department, who are out there on the trucks, cleaning the lights off, you know, just the tremendous response in our city by our staff. So I just want to thank you for that, and just being proactive on making sure all of our residents are safe out there and getting out the stop signs. As you can kind of see, between the storm and the transformer that was hit on Tiedemann Road, Chief Milkie has brought to my attention we need to do some precautionary measures to make sure that our lights are still working in these instances. So he has proposed some kind of a major expense for stop signs and generators for major intersections that will be on the safety committee meeting tonight. So I hope that city council will move forward with this. I think that for the long term, this may be a huge cost upfront, but will save a lot of hassle in the future. I attended a meeting at the Northeast Tower Regional Sewer District a couple of weeks ago. And it was a good reminder of how many different programs they offer residents to get discounts on their bills. So just kind of wanted to remind everyone, since their rates will continue to go up the next five years, that they do have these incentives for the sprinkler program, hardship program, homestead credits, downspout credits, if you use a rain barrel. So the first thing that you'll see if you go to their website are all these different incentive programs. So go check it out if you have not signed up for those already. Also, the city closed on the purchase of all the properties that were in front of council last meeting at Memphis and Tiedemann. So I just wanted to report on that. I want to say great job to Bob Hennings and all the parents who worked on the night of the races. That was a tremendous turnout. And I know the post-prom and athletic boosters were able to raise a lot of money for our kids. And I just want to kind of thank the parents because...
$14,000.
$14,000?
$14,000, $8,000. Actually, it was $23,000.
Bob, you should know better. You're not supposed to talk from the audience. But that's amazing. And, you know, I don't think without the parents in this community working for the students, we'd be able to get some of the things that we did. So great job there. Everybody's touched on how amazing the play was. So I'll skip that. Just a big shout out to those kids. If you're interested in getting solar panels on your home, the county co-op, residential co-op, will be held this Thursday in the Senior Community Center at 6:30. So if you're interested in solar panels, save some long-term costing of your energy. Come check out the program, just hear about what's going on. I will be holding a couple of meetings in the near future. One at the Terraces on March 22nd at 6:30, and one at the Westbrook's on March 28th at 6:30. So if you have a chance to ask me any questions, I'll give some updates. So if you live in those apartment buildings, come on out. I want to remind everyone, we have the Easter Icon on March 24th. Registration is at 10:30 AM. It's a great event for those kids six and under, the residents. My daughter absolutely loves this event. Also, the PTA has their breakfast with the Easter Bunny that morning. So you can have a fun-filled Easter day that day. As a result of that transformer I already talked about that was hit on Tiedemann Road, there will be some power upgrades to that area. So the residents along that area from 480 into Bit Off will lose power from March 21st, on March 21st, from 8:00 AM to about 4:00 PM. We did send out letters to that area, and First Energy did say that they're going to notify NOBAR. That's going to directly impact you. I don't know if you received any notification. But letters from the city will be going out. I want to congratulate the girls' seventh grade basketball team. They did amazing this season, and we will see them here at the next meeting for a proclamation. So I look forward to that. I also wanted to give a shout out to our police once again. I had a resident come up to me and just, she was gone on vacation for a couple of months. And she did a vacation check, and she said that she has cameras on her house. The police checked on her house every single day without fail, various times of the day. And she just said, I just can't believe what great services we have in the community. And I just, I never even knew it. I never used the service before. But I could see them every day checking my house. So, you know, thank you to the police officers that do such good work, and they're diligent about that program. And the last thing I have is, if you haven't heard, they're going to be making some changes to the Ohio Driver's License effective July 2nd of this year. They're trying to make the process a little bit more secure by making sure that these people who are registering are legitimate cardholders, preventing loss within in the Bureau, and a couple other things. So you will never receive your driver's license at the Bureau anymore. It will be mailed to you 10 days after visiting. And they will be changing the look of the driver's license. So we did post that information on the city's website if you want to learn and learn any bit more about that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on to the director's report. We'll begin this evening with our rec manager, Mrs. McGinty.
Good evening. Just want to congratulate fire chief Kevin Paul. Looking forward to working with you. Our next theme night Public Skate will be held this Friday from 8:00 to 9:15. And the theme is Luck of the Irish. Summer youth baseball registration is currently taking place. You can register online at www activityreg.com, or stop at the Recreation Center during regular business hours. And wanted to reiterate, as the mayor said, the spring egg hunt will be held on March 24th. Registration starts at 10:30 AM, and the hunt begins at 11:00. The hunt is for children six and under, and don't forget your baskets.
Thank you. Next up is our finance director, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention to council, our energy consultant will be back again next meeting for a gas price refresh, where he will competitively shop the gas prices. And again, we will be asking that be passed by emergency. The rates that he competitively shops are only good for that day. Next meeting, I hope to be able to have the introduction of a revised investment policy. You will see future legislation associated with a banking services agreement and merchant services. Then, next meeting, you will also see an update to the RITA tax code changes. I know we've recently made changes. They have some more changes associated with centralized collection of net profit taxes. So that will, that'll be introduced next meeting as well. And then just to reiterate on the CPP agreement, the $64,000 that was mentioned is not an annual savings. That's over the life of a 10-year agreement that the city would enjoy discounts over the first five years on a sliding scale downwards of 5%, 4%, 3%, 2%, and 1%. So if there's any questions about that, or if you need me to expand, just let me know. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Excuse me, may I ask Director Schaefer a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Regarding the legislation on the revised income tax, I understand why it's occurring. Do we have any sense yet of how it's going to impact us? I mean, we know that the state's going to collect 5%, I believe it is, which is more than what we're paying RITA to collect. Do we have any other sense of any other negative impacts to the budget yet?
That has not been projected. Unfortunately, the outcome, as far as our challenge to that, does not look favorable to the city. That has not been finalized. As far as moving forward, what that is going to reduce our collection of net profit, I don't have that projected. I assume the state is going to be working to set up an infrastructure to be able to actually do that. They will have to expand their current capabilities for the Ohio Department of Taxation. And I'm sure there will be plenty of more info to come. As far as RITA, obviously, they are not happy about the change, as well as many of the municipalities. But as far as the dollar impact to Brooklyn, I don't know exactly when that's going to happen, or how much that dollar amount is.
Okay. And it does not look like this case will be appealed?
It's already on appeal. Case is already on appeal in the 10th district.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move on with our service director, Mr. Birbon.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The city of Brooklyn received the annual report for the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works on March 1st. The department operates in 38 communities and maintains more than 1,200 miles of sanitary sewers and 800 miles of storm sewers. The Department of Public Works did the following in the city of Brooklyn in 2017. Cleaned over 59,000 feet of sanitary lines, cleaned over 64,000 feet of storm lines, completed several reviews of construction projects throughout the city, responded to over 314 calls from the residents, smoke and dye tested 16 times, and they cleaned 34 catch bases. Just a reminder that to all residents, we will be having a shred day on Saturday, April 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. If you plan on doing some spring cleaning, the service garage will also be open that day. So you can drop off your extra rubbish and your household hazardous waste. concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birbon. Lastly, is our economic development director, Mr. Udris.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to elaborate on two items in my report regarding the ordinance that are before you in first reading today. The project regarding Hope Bridge is a job creation tax credit retention program grant that would provide tax incentives to allow this company to pay and defer some of the costs of their relocation and training of employees. The company was founded in 2005 as a provider for comprehensive intervention... The company was founded in 2005 as a provider for comprehensive interventional behavioral science consulting services for children on the autism spectrum, which is now one of the fastest-growing developmental disabilities in this country. Hope Bridge currently provides services in the Indiana market with over 700 clients, and has a long waiting list for new users. They are looking to expand and operate into the Cleveland market, excuse me, into the Ohio market, and they have chosen Brooklyn as their home. They are going to hire high-wage lead behavioral consultants who coordinate registered behavioral technicians. The technicians are recent college graduates who are underemployed, and candidates tend to have a four-year degree but are not certified by the Board of Behavioral Analysts. Hope Bridge will provide and pay for that extensive training with those new hires, and ultimately, they would receive the certification. So this project would create 35 new jobs, it would create almost $350,000 in new payroll for the City of Brooklyn after the abatements that were provided. We strongly recommend council to approve this grant. The last item, I just wanted to provide some additional information regarding the properties on Tiedemann. The city will be securing county funds to use demolition dollars to immediately begin demolishing the properties and secure them, and at the same time, we'll be going out with a request for proposals with the Development Committee for commercial use of those properties pursuant to the current zoning. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Udris. Appreciate that. All right, we'll now move on with the legislation for our agenda this evening. The first of which are a couple of grants from the Fire Department. I have a letter that says, "Mayor Gallagher and City Council, I respectfully request authorization to apply for two grants from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Medical Services. The first grant is the Ohio EMS Electronic Tablet Funding Opportunity. This funding encourages EMS reporting submissions to the Ohio Emergency Medical Service Incident Reporting System. I am requesting one tablet for each of our ambulances." The second is the Priority One Grant, which is offered by the OOPS as well. This grant can be used for the training, for the purchase of equipment and vehicles, and to improve availability, accessibility, and quality of emergency medical services provided the citizens of Brooklyn. Neither of these grants requires a match from the City of Brooklyn, and that comes from sincerely Kevin Paul, acting Fire Chief, but now current Fire Chief.
Moved to authorize applying for the grants.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
The second is a letter from the Mayor. A donation from the Red Cross. Dear City Council, please be advised, the American Red Cross donated four infant and six child mannequins, along with several lung bags and replacement bows, a $500 value, to be used for CPR and lifeguarding training. I ask for the City Council to serve this as their formal notification as required by ordinance 201658, and that comes from the Mayor of the City of Brooklyn. Next is ordinance 2018-11 is up for third ring adoption this evening. This is authorizing declarations of official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations of temporary advances made for payments prior to issuance and related matters.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-12 up for third ring adoption, amending various rules of council, codified pursuant to Section 12101 of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
May I make a statement before the vote? Thank you. At our last council meeting, some members gave their reason for voting no on this prayer ordinance. Tonight, I would like to give my reason behind my vote. You can check the facts of my statement online at the Office of the United States Senate Chaplain. It says that there is separation of church and state, not God and state. Each day, Chaplain Barry C. White opens the Senate session with prayer. The cities of Cleveland, Amherst, and Lorraine do the same, to mention a few of many. I believe in the triune God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and in the second person of the blessed Trinity, Jesus Christ. I am not offended by those who believe in a God of a different name, or if they believe in no God at all. That is their right in a free country. Why should they be offended by my beliefs? I claim this quote from the Bible, Joshua, Chapter 24. "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pucci.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I've already stated what my opinion is at the last couple of meetings, but just to clarify, my objection has nothing to do with the separation of church and state. My objection is that we're going to be excluding some of our residents in the prayers that are said, and I just believe that I'm elected to represent all residents of the City of Brooklyn regardless of their faith, no faith, religion, or no religion. Thank you.
Can I?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Just last meeting, we talked about possibly putting in "or" moment of silence. Can I make a motion to add that language in there? Does that make sense?
In lieu of?
No, in a, like, followed by an opening prayer or moment of silence.
So it'd be the option?
Yeah.
I would second your motion. Okay. To add the words "or" or "moment of silence"? Do you want, maybe we should clarify how the sentence would read, just so everybody's clear.
Yes, so, "The President shall then lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an opening prayer or moment of silence."
So we can have both, is that what you're saying?
Well, either or.
Well, I got a question. How are you going to vote either or?
No, 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 the language is either or. So if I, because it says council designates, so if I don't want to designate someone, it's just...
On a rotating basis, as we talked about.
So that means if you don't have anybody here, be opening a moment of silence, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And just to make a comment, I do have to, I've basically just sat and listened to several people detract from this, and I've not said a whole lot about it. However, to say this, the prayer is exclusionary, and that by somehow me supporting this, I am not representing certain citizens of Brooklyn, personally, I find that absurd. It's also based on totally false pretenses. In reality, prayers are not exclusionary, they're all-encompassing. The opposite is true. Prayer has been since the dawn of time mankind's way of recognizing a higher power and simply asking for his guidance in our lives. Asking for God's blessing on our city includes every resident, whether they have any type of faith or not. And again, to somehow suggest that by wanting to ask for God's blessing in our city, that I'm not representing certain residents, is just simply not true. You know, I also find it somewhat ironic that, you know, we want to exclude God from this, but during times of tragedy and mourning, just about every single member of council up here has offered thoughts and prayers to various members of our community, to various members in the city and in the state, in the country, and to that, I echo that as well. And at the end of the swearing-in of Mr. Paul tonight, at the end of the swearing-in, the last sentence says, "This I promise, as I shall answer to God. When I swore in to take the oath of office, the last words that I said were, 'So help me, God.'" At the Brooklyn Memorial Day Ceremony, we open with prayer, we close with prayer. Mrs. Pucci mentioned several cities in your northeast Ohio that do it. The Ohio House, the Ohio Senate, the U.S. House, the U.S. Senate, all of which open that. So certainly to say that somehow if we support this, we're excluding residents, the absolute opposite is true. Look, I'm a Christian, I accepted Christ as my Savior as a young man, I have zero apologies for that. I try to live my life every day in light of that. I am not here to try to change anyone's mind about their faith at all. I've been on council for eight years, in my eighth year, I've never one time done that. And so, or my seventh year, I should say. So this ordinance is not meant anything but just to continue traditions that we've held in this country for over 200 years. And the fact that our culture has changed, that was brought up by somebody, really has zero bearing on the fact that we were founded on Judeo-Christian beliefs. Americans for over 200 years have asked God's blessing in government settings all over America. And now whether you're a Christian, Muslim, Buddhist, atheist, agnostic, whatever, you know, prayers offered by guests and invited by members of council are for the entire city. It's not excluding anyone. So I very much look forward to this. I have no objection to the amendment that was just made up here, but I just, I think that saying that I'm excluding people is a sounder false pretense, is that's simply not true. I'm not excluding anybody whenever I invite, or any member of council invites someone up here. And so I just wanted to make that clear, and we can take the vote on the amendment now.
I mean, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I want to be sure that the record is clear. There are two rules in play that mention prayer. Rule four, opening procedures. The revised sentence, if the original motion were to be adopted, would have read, "The President shall then lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an opening prayer." Open parenthesis, "Prayer shall be led by a designated current council member," closed parenthesis, period. In Rule, pardon me.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Item number three in the Order of Business would be amended to read after item number two, Pledge of Allegiance, "Opening prayer not to exceed two minutes." I'm only curious to know if the motion to amend, which has been offered and seconded, addresses both rules? And if that's the case, what would the language be in both of those rules that would be different? And finally, who would be the person to decide whether or not there would be a prayer or a moment of silence?
I can answer the second question. As we discussed before, that's going to go on a rotating basis. Each council member will have a meeting, but they are in charge of picking that person, and that's how it will be decided, as we discussed at prior meetings.
Okay. And then, so the first question, does the, may I, Mr. Chair, my apologies, I'm not trying to argue before, but to the person who made the motion, Councilwoman Ryan Shaki, did you intend to amend the language of both Rules Four and Fourteen?
Yeah, I forgot Rule 14 handed as well.
Okay, so Rule Four would be followed by an opening prayer or a moment of silence?
Yeah.
And then?
And then same thing, opening prayer or...
Moment of silence.
Moment of silence.
In Rule 14. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
To amend ordinance 2018-12, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
As amended?
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
No.
To adopt, Mayor, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance, I believe the ordinance passes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Members of Council. Next up is ordinance 2018-13, up for third ring adoption, authorizing the Mayor of the City of Brooklyn to enter into agreements with the Director of Transportation relating to the slope repair along a portion of Bridge Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-14, up for third ring adoption, authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council energized community grants.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-17 is being held in advance and will remain there until the Sustainability Committee can meet and then report back to council. Ordinance 2018-19 is up for third ring adoption, $1,420,000 in notes. Make the motion to adopt. Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-27 is on second reading this evening, authorizing the service configuration installation of an email system.
Fifteen sixteen.
I'm just getting all over the place. All right, I apologize for that. Let me jump back. Let me jump back. I missed two. Oh, all right, I apologize. Ordinance 2018-15 is up for third ring adoption, authorizing the Mayor to enter into a service agreement renewal with Bailey Communications Incorporated to provide maintenance of network, support, software, and other related services for the City of Brooklyn.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-16 is up for third ring adoption, and ordinance to vacated portion of Montgomery Place, south of Manoa Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
I apologize for that, thank you. All right, and then ordinance 2018-27 is on second reading, I'll finish reading it, I can get through with reading that. It says, "Authorizing the service configuration installation of an email system, upgrade the City of Brooklyn's IT computer system with Bailey Communications in the amount of $37,587.50." Under New Business this evening, Resolution 2018-2, requesting suspension and adoption as a resolution in support of the proposed Brooklyn School District renewal levy.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Stand.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-30 is up for a process pension adoption as well, authorizing the City engineer, the City of Brooklyn, to prepare and execute an application for Safe Roads to School infrastructure funding for the Brooklyn Safe Roads to School Initiative, and to submit same to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Introduce by all the suspend rules?
Second. To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?